All right, we're going to call the meeting to order in accordance with the open meeting law. The board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. We are also being recorded on Zoom. And for purposes of Zoom, we have tonight this evening joining us Mr. Walner. So all of our votes this evening will be roll call votes. So we're joined at the outset of this meeting by Mr. Walner virtually and Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Studo, Mrs. Gonzalez in person. And the board states for the record that the meeting agenda contained the Zoom information on attending virtually and the number and the Zoom link. And if we could, if you could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our first order of business is the petition of Joe's Quickmart, a change of manager and doing business. As I'm going to recuse myself because the petitioner is represented by Attorney Barnowski, who I actually have at the present time case, I represent the city of Malden and Attorney Barnowski's firm is actually opposing counsel on the case. It's not a, nothing bad. It's a conciliatory circumstance, but just to avoid any issue, I'll be turning the gavel over to Mrs. Gonzalez for that matter.
Okay. Thank you. So Joe's Quickmart, change of manager and DBA. So who is here to represent?
Hi, good evening. I'm Mr. Board. My name is Pat Barnowski of the Department of Public Hygiene and Food and Water. I'm with Mr. Walner by Main Street in Boston. And with me this evening is Evan Gennett, who is the post-manager of the company.
Thank you.
So we are here on an application list. So application, one is for a change of manager and the other is for a change of DBA. On the first matter, this is a change of manager from the current manager of record, Tyler Trendy, to Ms. Rivera now. Ms. Rivera had been the manager of record and has been on site really on consistent basis for the past three and a half years. We changed to Tyler Trendy when this application came initially came before the board over the summer and there was a takeover from the prior operator Speedway, Joe's Quickmart. And at that point in time, there was still a transition in staff and the post-manager of record anticipated was going to continue his employment with the company and that ended up DTC. So there's really been a consistent management role on site. And this manager has been approved by this board in the past, approved by the AETCC. He's familiar with the rules and regulations, solid order of work writing and of the AETCC. And so that's one piece. And the other piece is the change of DBA. That's just simply bringing the DBA currently the operation. This is a long time location Speedway and now we're going to get Joe's Quickmart operated by Cross American.
Okay. What was going on? I do remember, I do remember that coming forward with, with the other site. So the new name is going to be Joe's Quickmart?
Yes, that's correct.
Instead of Speedway?
Yes.
Okay. Do any of the members have any questions? No questions, Ms. Joe?
For the education of the board, Madam Chair, please department require additional time to complete the background check and I believe there was a report in there from the chief that the candidate meets the standard.
Everybody's okay with that, okay? Everything sounds fine? Is this up for a vote?
Yes.
We have a motion?
Madam Vice Chair, I move to approve the change of DBA for the retail packaged goods, store wine and malt beverage license for Joe's Quickmart's mall LLC 231 Main Street from Speedway to Joe's Quickmart's number 514, subso regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Studo. We have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez is aye and the chair recuses herself. Oh, we have another, and we have another motion.
Madam Vice Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the retail packaged goods, store wine and malt beverage licenses for Joe's Quickmart's mall LLC, DBA Joe's Quickmart, number 14, 514, 231 Main Street from Tyler Trendy to Ms. Rivera.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Studo, a second from Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez is aye and the chair recuses herself. Okay, I think we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations and best of luck to you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too.
And I'll turn the chair back to you.
All right. Okay, our next order of business is recognition of two North Reading Eagles Scouts we have here with us today, Dan and Andrea Mills and their son Kyle. And we have John and Michelle Barrett and their son Max. So we welcome you and why don't you come up and tell us a little bit about what we heard about your projects. And we're putting you on the spot, so don't worry about it. All you have to, well, I'd love it if you could introduce the rest of, I know your brother, Sam. I also know your other brother Nolan.
That's my brother Sam. That's my, these are my grandparents, Lois Myers, Jim Myers, these are my parents.
They're visiting from Ohio.
Oh, that's wonderful. Good that you were here. This is convenient. And Kyle, who else is with you?
Either my parents and that is my grandmother.
All right. So we, we heard about your ceremony, your ceremony when you were inducted as Eagle Scout. So we thought, we don't want to let that occasion pass us by without acknowledging you from the board. Leanne and Mrs. Gonzalez and I attended Christopher Neary's ceremony. It was really a wonderful ceremony. And we think that it's, there's such a small percentage of scouts that are able to make it to that level that we really are proud, very proud of you on behalf of the board. So we wanted to at least, you know, introduce you to the community, acknowledge your efforts. It was a difficult thing to get through, I'm sure, during COVID and we wanted to just give you some recognition. So if you don't mind sliding up to the microphone, telling us a little bit about the project that you worked on to be able to, to achieve the Eagle Scout.
For sure.
And Max, Max, you can go first and then we'll call you up.
Sure. So my project was building shelving units for the Unicarnation Church. The goal was to, so that the food pantry could move into the building on their property. And so they needed to move all that stuff. It was, it was a storage building at the time, so they needed to move all that stuff in another shed so they could move the food pantry. So my project was to build shelving units in the storage shed, taking the stuff from the new food pantry area over to the storage shed to expedite the process.
That's great. And how long did that take you to complete?
From planning to completion, probably about, four months, three, four months.
So we have some pictures, I think, Mr. Gilberto share and of you obviously had help, right? You had the help, your dad's helping in that one.
Dad's right there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. And your brother's an Eagle Scout too, right?
He is, yes.
That's right. And who's in that picture?
That's me on the left and then my good buddy Brandon DeClean on the right.
Oh, yeah. And he's any, he, he's an Eagle Scout too, right?
He's not.
Not yet? Or is he?
He did not, he did not make it.
All right. So that's great. Does anybody have any questions? No?
No questions, just comments.
Yeah, same. Same. Let's hear the comments. You want to, do we want to comment individually or do we?
Why don't we comment collectively?
Yeah, let's do that.
Because it's going to be across the board the same.
Yeah. And Kyle, do you want to come up to the mic and tell us what you, what your project was? There is one, you can sit up there, there's one right there.
Yeah, so my project was a flag retirement box and it actually, it happens to be in the town hall. It's in the main lobby area. The main goal of that project was to build a better box for people to put their retired or flags that are in need of retiring. The previous box was significantly smaller than the one that's here now. And I think a lot of people didn't know where it was, so now it's in a more accessible place and it's easier to find.
That's great.
And it's a fine piece of furniture, too.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Are you looking for pictures, Mr. Gilberto?
I have a picture and for some reason it's not.
I have a question for Kyle. Can you, can you recount what the Boy Scouts do with retired flags at camp outside Sutton Park?
Yeah, so the, my Boy Scout troop, troop 750 here in North Reading, they'll empty out the box and they go through like the whole ceremony of retiring them and they do them on scout trips or at troop meetings.
It's a beautiful ceremony. I've seen it done, yeah. It's a great ceremony.
Well, we're waiting for your picture too. But you'd be nice parents, if you want to make any comments too, you're here.
I'll, I'll give a little bit of anecdote about the project itself. So it's not just the scouts and a couple of adult leaders who are kind of just overseeing, but the younger scouts come too. So you got sixth graders and seventh graders who maybe have never touched a drill or worked. So during the project, Max had to make up a project for them and a highly value added piece of this was building floor platforms. So the, the younger scouts were building these floor platforms that went underneath the shelves and was able, so the underneath storage was able to be off, off the floor in case the floor gets wet. So that's a cool little addition that happened and he and Brandon basically invented a makeshift platform and the younger scouts were able to build those themselves.
That's great. You know, the, the achievement to Eagle Scout, it takes so much effort to get there and we really did, we really do want to acknowledge you publicly, just like we were able to acknowledge Mr. Neary because, you know, you really are our future leaders. You're learning all of these things that, you know, are somewhat lost to society and culture and things like that. And you're learning these sort of disciplined way to live and, you know, resilience and being able to, to take the time to do a project like that that's community oriented. Both of those are helpful to your community. And definitely the apple doesn't fall far from the tree for both of you and your family. So we really, we really just think it's important to let the community know you're out there. I think I read a stat that I talked about at Mr. Neary's ceremony where only nine percent of, there's not that many scouts anymore and only nine percent of the scouts achieve Eagle Scout. So it's really, it's really incredible, it's a real incredible testament to you and your families and all of the scouts that are behind you, supporting you. Because we, we actually heard a little bit about both of your projects at, at Mr. Neary's. So it was, it's, we really are very proud of you as community members and we're, we look forward to seeing what contributions you're going to have as leaders in the future. Hopefully it'll be for North Reading, but maybe it'll be beyond that.
Maybe you'll be sitting up there.
Or sitting somewhere else. So we're very, very proud of you and we appreciate you coming and it's something so important, but it's also something so positive to acknowledge what you've done. So we, we actually, well, I'm gonna, my colleagues are going to have comments, but I just want to read, we have certificates of recognition as well for both of you. It's just our certificates of recognition from the town of North Reading. We're honored to present this certificate as an expression of high regard to the both of you upon your attaining the rank of Eagle Scout as members of the Boy Scouts of America and to extend a personal thank you for the community service work you performed to achieve this honor. So congratulations to both of you. And so let, I'm just gonna, let's have some comments from colleagues. Mr. Walner?
I'll just say I represent the 91% that didn't make it to Eagle Scout. I need to remind people of my youthful failures.
Well, it just shows a lot of perseverance from these two gentlemen, so it takes a lot, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
First of all, congratulations for your achievement. Congratulations to your parents and all those around you that supported you because again, I understand that it's not an easy task of choosing the project first and foremost, but then executing it. Only four months, you said, you know? You've got a piece of cabinetry here that, you know, you've got a bright future in cabinetry. Honestly, it's beautiful. But you know, you said only four months. Well, it's not only four, that's, that's a huge contribution and a huge commitment that you've made to the community. And again, what you've done in setting an example for others, but also in these tumultuous times, reminding us that there's hope for the future. You know, I feel good about you two guys and what you've done for the community here. And, you know, you're our future, you're future leaders of the community, I hope in the community, but also other places. But I wish you nothing but the best and just gratitude for your willingness to step forward and achieve your goal. Congratulations very much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Studo?
I'll let go of Mr. O'Leary. I'll also say, I know, you don't want to join the select board. So, yeah, I just went through the, I was ever affiliated with it. I went to school with kids that did, but I just read some of the requirements and it's kind of amazing. It just shows you need to be consistent. That's something that many lack, so that's very impressive. You need to stick with it and it seems like you really can't take any time off from it if you want to hit the pinnacle of it. So it's not like I'm going to take, you know, a year off in between and then hopefully I make Eagle, from the, my understanding of reading about it. So no, I, I think it's great. I think that based on those percentages, I'm a math guy, I mean, having two in North Reading is pretty good. I mean, if we down down even that, I mean, to have two out of a town as, as small, probably the numbers are even more impressive, so, oh, thank you, you know? And I'm sure that unless something goes dramatically different for both of you, I just don't see how the success rate is not very high within a remarkable ceiling. So, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
First of all, I love that the generations are here and it really shows, to get this far, you do need your family support. It's important and you obviously have it. So that's just nice to see. It's close to my heart. I was a Girl Scout, I was a Girl Scout leader, brought my girls right through high school. So I know the commitment it takes and the camaraderie that you get. I, I know with, with my girls, they were personalities that would have never have been together. They would have never been together, so, and that brought them together and made them learn how to work with each other and, and befriend someone that they might, may not have befriended. So I, I just feel like scouting is just such an important thing. It teaches so much and congratulations to you because you went above and beyond and, you know, ahead of everyone else and congratulations for that and I wish you all the best.
Now I'll just say, I, my dad was a scout and he didn't make it to Eagle Scout, but we, that's how we were raised with the code of, the code of conduct and the Scouts Honor Pledge, so we grew up with all of that, being instilled in us. So it's, it's far reaching, what you're learning and who's, who you're surrounding yourself with. I remember your brother because years ago when I first got on the board, Mrs. Maguire asked me to speak at a Veteran, at a Veterans Day service and your brother spoke at the Veterans Day service. It was beautiful, but so well done. So it's nice to have you as members of the community and it's nice to see what both of you are doing. Of course, we know your family as well too, because your dad's on our finance committee. See your dad.
Usually on Zoom, but.
But it's nice to have this kind of participation, but it's also nice to see what you're doing and we, we would like to see where you're going with it. And I think with that, we're gonna maybe take a recess and take some pictures with you while you're all here, if that's okay. So we can mask up if that's the best thing and we'll just take pictures with masks this one time, all right? So.
What do you want to do?
We're gonna do a brief recess, all right? And we'll do, how about Kyle? We'll, we'll have, one at a time and then we'll get to both of you because I think that's important. Maybe right, Dan, Mr. Gilberto?
Yeah, I think that might be correct.
Right? Oh, I'll let you comment when we come back, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I know, that's, that's beautiful. Well, I'm gonna come to you to make. Oh, and Rich, how are we gonna, oh, can we stand in front of the, the bear so he can come in?
We can leave a spot.
Why don't we put Kyle in the middle?
Flag football supposedly.
Kyle, come in the middle a little bit, all right? Hold it, but we want to definitely see a whole, all right? Oh, there he is. Well, we have a little space so we can see him. You're in the big screen, you know, virtual meeting. Are we all in here, would you say? Can we see? Can we see Rich?
Yeah.
Definitely putting you on the spot. Would it be all right together with your family? Is that, if you want to do that and if you're here, you're here and you might as well come in. Why don't you get around to some? Dan and Andrea, get around. Dan, do you want me to do that?
Let's, either, sure.
And you're tied. Yeah.
Rich is smiling.
We're just gonna keep eyes smiling. Oh, I know. You get used to people. Yeah, you come on, you're on the. All right, this one's kind of weird. He's smiling, but can you see it? Can he be seen behind us?
Rich, there's no way your head doesn't come in awkward.
The only one that's smiling is Rich, he can only see his smile.
You're good? And can, can the family come and join us as well? And why don't you guys?
Going back.
Come around, come around. But just be careful the wire. I know, it's so foul. Oh, I know, and I talked to Nolan, um, talk.
You?
Yeah. Nope.
Is he rich?
None anymore. You're the tallest, no.
I like that, I like that over here, like it's my two-year-old.
Because I go ask Mr. Gilberto for comments.
Ma'am, we have seven, eight, nine, ten, and six of our Eagle Scouts.
Oh, you just need Nolan.
He's on his way.
Wow, that's impressive.
And the one who's not an Eagle Scout is a girl.
Nolan is just a love, he's such a sweet kid. Don't give him that much credit. It's okay. But thank you. Thank you for that. All right, so we're back from a brief recess.
What a relief.
And I forgot to go to Mr. Gilberto for comment. Mr. Gilberto, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very brief, for those of you who, most of you know I am an Eagle Scout myself, but I only offer that to tell you that I understand the work that you went through, particularly when it comes to pulling off a project. I remember that feeling my sophomore, junior year of how on earth am I gonna, am I gonna do this? How am I gonna put together the hours that are required? How am I gonna raise the money that's needed to do it as well?
He still asks those questions.
So you saw where I was going there. How am I going to coordinate all these people? So it turned out to be a great opportunity to learn some important lessons for what I do for our town today here. So, you know, those lessons and that challenge that you just went through, or maybe not so recently went through now at this point, it's in, it's very important and, you know, I recognize and understand the work that you went through. I guess most importantly, thank you for everything that you've done for our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Wow, I, we just learned something new about the T S.
Yes, we did.
Can we ask you, what was your project?
You can.
Do you remember?
You have to remember.
These aren't make a birdhouse. These are pretty significant projects that contribute to the community.
So downtown Beaverton, there is, Citizens for Adequate Housing runs a transitional shelter for single women and their children. And so there was a playground in need of some help and we did some work to take care of that playground.
That's great.
It was, it was a big project.
Yeah, that's amazing. That's great. Is it still there?
So that was quite a while ago that that occurred and I do think that they've redeveloped the area.
It was so long ago, it's now part of urban renewal. It's part of an urban renewal project.
So I don't believe so.
And there's actually a group for Eagle Scouts in, it's not a society.
An association.
An association, right.
NESA.
NESA.
That you can connect up with other Eagle Scouts across the country, right?
Yep.
It's just a great crew to be in. Great achievement, admirable achievement, just like Mrs. Gonzalez said, we're really proud of you.
On behalf of the Barrettts, I want to say thank the Select Board for recognizing these scouts, it's a, it's a big deal and thank you very much for doing what you did. I appreciate it.
It's our pleasure, it's our pleasure. It is our pleasure. You can stay for the tax classification hearing.
Good times.
Some of us, some of us don't even want to be here for it.
Yeah, yeah, actually you probably could get an extra minute.
Dan probably has to. Poor Dan. All right, so thanks very much, yeah. Peace. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming. Happy Thanksgiving. All right, we have our next order of business, which we're almost on time for, is the tax classification hearing. And I'm just gonna read the public notice into the record. The Select Board Notice of In-Person and Virtual Public Hearing on the Property Tax Classification. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 22nd, 2021 at 8:00 p.m. to determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 56. This hearing is anticipated to be held in-person in room 14 of Town Hall located at 235 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, and via virtual technology. And the publication of hearing includes the Internet Zoom link and the phone numbers, the mobile phone numbers, dial-by-location numbers, meeting ID, et cetera. Interested taxpayers are encouraged to present oral testimony at this hearing or may submit information on their views and the writing to the Select Board, either via U.S. mail to, to the Select Board, 235 North Street, North Reading, Mass, or via email at townadministrator@northreadingmass.gov no later than 12 o'clock noon on Thursday, November 18th, 2021, by the Select Board of North Reading, 11/11/2021. Okay, so we're gonna open the public hearing. Okay, so we're gonna open the public hearing, and we are joined by our Deb Carbone. If you wanna come up to the table, we are joined by our Finance Director, too, Liz Rohr. And Mr. Gilbert, I don't know if you had anything to say to begin, or if we just wanna go right to Ms. Carbone. Give you a second there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I, we have, and you may or may not have seen, we have prepared the customary PowerPoint presentation with the addition of a new slide at the end that summarizes available exemptions, two new slides at the end that summarize available exemptions for the public. They are not a topic in terms of action during the hearing this evening, but we obviously wanna, you know, let folks know that there is relief that's out there. And so that's at the end of the presentation.
Just Madam Chair, before we start my, my comment, public statement that I have a family member who owns commercial real estate as well as residential real estate in the town of North Reading whereby the Board of Assessors are recommending a single tax rate does not pose a potential conflict of interest. If they were proposing a split tax rate, I would be recusing myself from the discussion and vote on the matter, but since they are recommending a single tax rate, I will be participating.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Please let the record show. Thank you.
Sure. Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying I'm glad we're back in person. Last year trying to do this by Zoom was really difficult because there's sometimes questions, and thank God we're back. That being said, I do wanna just kinda update you guys. I really haven't seen yous in a year or so, so I wanna just update you on the assessing office and.
What we've been doing?
So last 34 months, we've completed the entire reappraisal, data conversion. We've also entailed a complete revaluation. When I say revaluation, the entire town is reevaluated from soup to nuts. Land, buildings, sheds, pools, everything. We did get all that done, and we got it done timely, on the new system. So, and I have to say, I was a little concerned going into the rebalance on a new system. But we worked really hard, and the Department of Revenue was really happy with our submitting of documentation for the rebalance. This also came with a retirement of one of our senior administrators, so that left just Paula and I to finish out all of this. But we did get it done. We kept our head to the ground. In a more important way, the Department of Revenue was happy. Certification came in two weeks early, so that's, I just wanted to update you guys on what we've been doing for the past 34 months. That being said, we can move on to the classification hearing.
I think we're gonna call up your presentation. On the screen. Just give one second.
Is it on the laptop? Is it on the laptop?
I didn't know if I was staging. Here we go. I just, excuse me for one second. I did, I don't know why I did this, but I skipped over public comment. I think, I think we can get back to that after this hearing, if that's okay. I, because I didn't have my glasses on when I was looking at the agenda.
My recommendation would be to come back to it after the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, no time.
Also, this may generate more comment.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm sorry about that.
They can hang in there.
All right.
So we're here tonight for the fiscal '22 property tax classification. This is a hearing that must be held by the Board of Selectmen to cast the revotes in order to submit our recap for certified tax rate. The three votes that must be taken. One is for a minimum residential factor, selection of an open space discount, in which we do not have any classified open space, we can talk about that, granting of a residential exemption, and granting of a commercial, a small commercial exemption. North Reading's prof, oh, my, oh, there it is. I looked in, then I looked away. North Reading's levy profile, as it looks today, the residential percent of the values is still at 87.23%. The commercial percent is at 12.76%, which this year for fiscal '22, with the, with the revaluation completed, we have a levy of $57,210,8. What is a split for dual tax rate? Communities that decide to tax residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property differently. Statute allows an increase in the CIP, Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property, share of the tax levy up to 50% higher than the residential value. This does not generate new revenue. It reallocates the levy burden. The tax rate split for years in the history of North Reading is 1985 and 1988. As we see North Reading's residential profile today, we have 4,298 residential homes with an average single-family value of 659,180. The residential condominium is increasing by 50 every year with the Pulte project. We're up to 907. The multifamilies make up a total of 41 properties. That's your two families, your three families, your four, and edgy. The mixed use, that's like if there's an apartment on top of a store or commercial space, that equals 22. We have 197 residential vacant lots as of today. So the first thing we wanna discuss is an open space discount. We do not have any classified, what they call classified open space in the town of North Reading. All of our property is taxed. It's either taxed at, at a agricultural farm, if it's a 7, 10, 12-acre parcel, then that's chapter property, what we call chapter property 61A. It's not open space. So we do not have any classified open space discount. The residential exemption. The Board may adopt an exemption of up to 20% to shift the residential class tax burden from the lower assessed properties that are the principal resident of a taxpayer to the higher assessed properties that are not the principal resident of a taxpayer, sorry. The next slide is, is the scenarios of what the shift would look like. The middle of this 10% exemption scenario is the average single-family home. I have used what the projected tax rate is going in for certification, and that's $15. And what I did was I took a lower-end and a higher-end home. And if you look on the fifth line down, the savings and cost, so the savings of that $838.77 would reduce the lower-end home, but would shift over to anything above the average valued home. Are there any questions on that?
No.
So what I did was I gave increments of five, so there's a 10%, a 15, and a 20. And it's the same methodology. You can just see how the numbers change with the increase in the percentage.
Miss O'Leary.
Quick question or comment?
Sure.
The, when you get the residential exemption, it primarily shifts to the commercial-industrial?
No, so the residential exemption, if we take that percentage, say if the Select Board would, wanted to adopt a 10%, it shifts on the residential class, or Class 1, as we call it. So that wouldn't have a bearing on the commercial-industrial, only the residential. So that savings on the lower-end homes would shift over to the higher-end homes. And then the commercial exemption would affect the, the commercial-industrial and personal property sets. It's separate?
I have a question, too.
Sure.
So you're, the median is the middle, the middle range that you have up here?
That's correct.
The home value of 559,000, assessed value, that is. So market value of 659, right?
659,180.
And so that, so what you're saying is that's, you've defined that because of your whole, the whole evaluation of property as the median range.
That's correct.
So if we were to vote in this residential exemption, the residential exemption would only apply to those, those homes of that amount or lower, of that assessed value or lower.
Or higher. So what happens is it shifts.
No, but what I'm saying is the residential exemption would benefit the properties that are valued at, that are assessed at 559 or lower, and what that exemption calculates out to be is shifted onto those parcels that are above that 559.
Exactly.
So it's not, it doesn't benefit every resident.
No.
Of the, it's kind of a misnomer because you would think that the residential exemption would apply to all, all residents who own their property.
And that's not true. I can give you a little bit of background on the exemption, the residential and commercial exemption, so this.
I was gonna ask you, has North Reading ever, my next question was, has North Reading ever, and if, if we did vote to enact this, because we talked a lot about this last year. We had a long discussion about it at last year's hearing. But if we voted to enact this, is that a permanent change?
So every year, you would have the option to remove that? As I understand it, and I'm just gonna put that little caveat in there, traditionally, your, your smaller towns don't really look at this as a viable option. This was really created and or enacted by legislation in the city of Boston and for the properties down the Cape. So what they did was, as an example, the properties down the Cape, they would, the towns would vote for this because the homes that are the primary residents, they would save on it, but if it wasn't their residence and it was a second home, then they would pay the higher percent. So that shift was, was beneficial for cities and big vacation places, if you will.
I just have another quick question on this. Can you go back to the slide where you're showing, it was 47, I think, 4721, single, oh, 4298, I was a little bit wrong. How many of the 4298 that you have here are under that market value or assessed value of six, the market value of 659 or assessed value of 5 over the 5?
I can, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't have that exact number right now with me. I didn't think to do that. I did run one for under 250, and we had five. So out of the 4298, I, I wouldn't even wanna guess, but you're probably looking at.
What about the 907 residential condominiums? How many of, because those would be eligible for that exemption if they fell under the, the market, the, your assessed value that you identified, based on the median of 659? How many would be?
So most of your condos outside of the Greens, the Greens are the only condo complex that exceed the 500,000 mark. So in other words, Pulte, we're at 4, we're at 450, right around there. And then our other small, like Greenbrier, those are averaging around 286 a unit. The Greens, you do have quite a few individual properties that are at 600,000 and up to eight, actually, because you have the freestanding units down there.
Okay.
So.
But most of those condominiums sound like they would, JT, the JT, the Pulte, most of those sound like they would.
Would be less.
Be eligible for this exemption.
Yes.
That would then be shifted onto the higher-valued parcels. All right, thank you. I just wanted to.
No problem.
Does anyone have any other questions on that? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, this just shows a 20% exemption, which was the third scenario. I think I left off at the 15%. You see the, to be clear, the median is the 659,180, is that correct? Ms. Carbone?
Yes.
Thank you.
That carries across the, the average single-family that is actually, I get to that number from the reporting I give to the Department of Revenue. So I just take all of my single-family homes, the condos aren't in there, the vacant land, just the single-family, and divided by the number of single-family that I have, the 4,298, and that gives me my 659,180. Just in case you wanna know where that number comes, it's, and that's a number I give you guys every year. So that carries through. So that carries through, no matter how much of an exemption, residential exemption you choose, it would still be that same middle point. That wouldn't change.
Did someone, okay, Mr. Stoudt?
I have a question. But it's a moving number, right?
It's a moving number every year.
If you see the trend in North Reading, where I haven't seen a single-family home built under seven figures since I pretty much moved here in 2017, that median keeps going up.
That's correct.
Right, so in effect, you know, you're, something like this eventually, if this keeps happening, you're gonna start giving tax breaks to people that are in some pretty expensive homes, if that median goes up. Like meaning if you ran this in Winchester, your median would be over a million, and you'd say, does somebody over a million really deserve an exemption? I'm just trying to get to that. So that's the other thing to take in mind, that, you know, the more we build with these higher numbers is gonna keep shifting up. Like I wouldn't be surprised if in a couple of years, that middle number is above seven. It wouldn't be shocking.
I anticipate it being above seven, we're right at seven next year, when I'm sitting here for this. We actually brought online nine new houses this year. We usually average between seven and nine. There was not one of the nine new houses that were below 850. Actually, most of them were right around the middle. So, and they definitely take me a lot longer to measure these days. They're not just little blocks anymore. They used to be, but you know.
Use the laser?
I do use the laser, but sometimes you need the tape measure because the sun's out. It doesn't work so well with the sun. So no, most of the, the nine new houses that we brought online this year, they're 850 to a hundred.
Can I ask you a question, thinking back on that? What do you anticipate for, from what you see, based on some of the projects around town, or however you pro forma it, what do you see for a single-family for next year? Between like now and when you're sitting here a year from now?
Can you?
Like how many single families do you think will either come online or build?
I'm anticipating around 11.
Okay. All in that price range or above?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Even the tear downs that are happening, so say a ranch goes on sale on Haverhill Street, that gets torn down, and a $900,000 home is going to go, even when they're renovating, they're adding the second floor, putting on massive addition, and again, you're looking at a value of 900,000. We send out what's called sales verification forms. So in other words, when somebody buys a piece of property, we send them this form, and it's for our information to just track our market, so that we know why our taxpayers are paying what they're paying for the property. A lot of cases, they, you know, they'll say the school systems, that is my number one answer. That is my number one answer. Second to that is, you know, sometimes I'll get a reply, you know, that interest rates are low, so I'll buy higher. But they're willing to pay these 900, 800,000 dollars for houses that, you know, 10 years ago, or even five years ago, were valued at six.
They never say it's because of the mortgage funds?
Yeah, you know what, never seen that answer. I'm not looking for it though.
I know, I know, I know we're in the midst of the presentation, and we're not exactly deliberating about this, even though it sounds like we're deliberating about it. But Mr. O'Leary, I know you had a comment or a question, and I do too.
Yeah, just a quick question in relation to home sales. You know, how does that generally affect, or actually affect, the assessed valuation? You know, I've lived in my home for 34 years now, you know, I know what I paid for it, I know what I put into it, but I think it's worth now, and what I'm assessed for. But house sales, I sell my house for $800,000, how do you assess it for the next owner?
So I'll just recap a little bit. That is a revaluation. We do update our values every single year. I'm a firm believer in that. I think you need to maintain that level of equity between your assessed value and the sale price. Otherwise, what happens is you're, within the certification year, your values soar and your tax rate plummets. And that just causes inequities for taxpayers. Fast forward, how we get to the values annually, and please remember, we're always a year behind, because we have to use 12 months of the inventory. So if I'm sitting here in November, looking at sending in a tax rate recap for this week, I don't have 12 months. So we use the prior year sales. Those prior year sales are then depicted by location, such as a neighborhood. Haverhill Street is a different land price than Little Mattel. We also depict the values through the analysis for styles of homes by age and by size. It's analyzed six ways to some day. I can tell you, the sales are what dictates the values that we see. We only execute. So that being said, the sales are the dictator of the values. When you ask what else and how else you can get there, our cyclical cycle is, it's worth its weight in gold. We go out, we re-measure, we relist these properties within that 10-year period. By doing that, we're maintaining the values of, say someone puts on a new deck, but they didn't take out a permit, finished a basement, but didn't take out a permit. We're trying to maintain that level of equity. We don't get in every house, but we do, we have pretty good inputs for it.
Back to my specific question. You know, so if I sold my house a year and a half ago for $650,000, would I be assessed for $650,000?
So you would be assessed, you should be assessed right around, within 10% of that, absolutely. Unless, again, remember, I'm a year behind.
Oh, I know, it's like you said, a year and a half.
So that would be, that would be the analysis for the year of the sales. And yet, you should be within 10% of that, 659, absolutely, all day long.
Also, I just have a, I just have a thought that, to me, the residential exemption, to me, as I understand it, and this is a great presentation with great answers, it doesn't seem to make sense to me if, unless it, unless it's to be borne by, you know, non-resident, or, it doesn't seem to make sense to me, because we have so many homeowners of that, you know, whatever, 4,700 or 4,900, that are, that reside here. It seems predominantly like, you know, we have residents. It's not a second home, or a vacation home, or a house that we're renting out to someone else, as a commercial type of thing, so. But that was just my thought in terms of the idea of this residential. We did talk at length about it last, in last year's hearing. But is there, do we have any, and Mr. Guberto, if Mr. Wallner's raising his hand, I actually can't see him on this, so I don't wanna, just in case he has any question too, I just wanna make sure we're.
I'll try to keep an eye on him.
Paying attention, all right.
I admittedly was not.
Yeah. So quiet, Mr. Wall here, I know.
I know.
He's as quiet virtually as he is in the hearing.
He wants to be out in the back deck with a pina colada.
I'm saying this because I recall, we had a lengthy discussion, Mr. Wall, I had a lot of discussion about this piece last year, that's what my recollection is.
No, thank you very much.
You all said, okay. No other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, that's great.
No.
All right, thank you.
So now we'll move on to the small commercial exemption. The small commercial exemption, or it's very similar as the residential exemption. What happens is the Department of Unemployment sends the, every assessing office within 351 communities, a list of commercial property that is valued under a million dollars and has fewer than 10 employees. We physically go through this list to do the best due diligence that we can. The value, we don't have a problem, that's on our database. Sometimes with the fewer than 10 employees, we may question that, so we'll do a little more digging and due diligence on that. As it stands right now on the small commercial exemption, there is only 67 properties that would even have potential of valuing this exemption. We have 85 industrial properties and 222 commercial properties. So out of both of those, there's only 67 that would qualify for this small exemption.
And then that burden shifts over to the larger businesses?
Does that include office condos?
Yep.
Yep. And what were the numbers again?
It does.
What were the numbers again, that we have?
So 222 commercial, and we have 85, 85 industrial. Now, I didn't include the personal property, because personal property doesn't work on this exemption. Does anybody have any questions on that? So this is, this is just a reminder, as we're almost wrapping up the hearing, the select board does have the option to shift the tax burden from the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor of 87.24. This means that no more than 12.76% of the residential burden can be shifted to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. The following pages contain the information of the impact of any shift of the tax burden that you may choose. The Board of Assessors, as of this hearing, recommend a factor or a tax, single tax rate? And I'm usually asked to give our opinion, so that's why I have it in there. So this pie is just a chart to show you how much the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property.
All right, Mr. Stoudt?
At what point, because we're, you're probably aware that we're having discussions about wastewater and sewer, and how that will dramatically change what you, it shouldn't, that's part of the point, because the change is high, right? Maybe it doesn't look like this in 10 years. At what, you know, if you have it, at what number do you see communities, you know, what percentage has to be commercial, industrial, before a split makes sense, before you shift more, if there is?
So there really is no rule of thumb. I can tell you, and I'm updating my time in this industry, back in the 1980s, late 80s, before they, before they actually decided that towns could split, before this magic 30%, which used to be a rule of thumb that we would go by. But so that certain municipalities, they did have, say, 22 or 26% with the commercial, industrial, and personal property together, then the piece of pie would work to that 30%, and then a shift was, at that time, accepted and or voted in. Now, since 1988, they, the legislation changed that as long as your minimum residential factor is below a certain amount, you do have the right to shift up to. And that's why they say up to, because you don't have to shift, you know, to the 1.5%. You can shift up to 10%, or 20%, or whatever.
So in that minimum residential factor, so if this pie was shown, let's just say residential 80, is that where that 20 gets calculated?
Exactly.
Okay, and then, and then also, this is like a little different, but then you have the factor in competitiveness if you shift it. Or does that even get factored in when you look at it?
I think if we go to the next slide, it'll probably make a little more sense.
We are talking about, you're talking about two different things.
I have a feeling.
You're talking about the residential exemption, so the residential exemption.
No, 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 I'm talking about the split.
The split tax rate, yeah.
Like meaning at what point, because we're having, like, at what point, in Abby's opinion, do we get to the point where it's like realistic, where we should look at the split tax rate?
Right, okay, yeah.
So Mike, can you go two slides over? We can jump out of water a little bit here. Oh, that's kinda hard to read. Do you wanna see it on paper? I did bring them here.
I have it here and I'll pull it up.
So this scenario, and I've given you from 2017 to 2020, which includes your tax rate, it includes the lower, the average, and then the higher. So if you look at this, the residential is up top, and the commercial is down below. So if you were to shift the saving, looking for savings on the residential, you're not really gonna achieve it from now, at this time, in my opinion. And that's what you asked, my opinion.
Yeah, the question is, because I know at this time it doesn't make sense, it's almost, I know it's hard to project, but at what, at what point, so you're, when you have more, like, we just need more, we just don't have enough.
Let's get through the presentation, then we can deliberate about it, because I know you're asking questions, but we also, we may have public comment on that. And then we as a board can, well, you're gonna, Mrs. Carbone's gonna stay with us, but also there's, is everything okay? Is everything all right?
No cheating.
I know, Mr. O'Leary, I think this is a correction.
All right.
He may have new material.
So, because, why don't we let Mrs. Carbone get through the presentation, hold the questions if we can, because I think we're stumping the poor assessor to telling us something that has a really a myriad of circumstances that have to factor in. But her simple answer, I think, Mr. Stoudt, was not right now.
Oh, no, no, I didn't suggest right now.
Because you're gonna basically shift from 87% of your taxpayers onto what?
12.76.
They're gonna, that's gonna be an immense burden.
I am suggesting right now, but I didn't say at what point.
And I did hear.
Well, we can, we can talk.
He has a vision.
We could.
There's a vision.
I think that really, we have to, we have to be visionaries in that aspect for as long as we're here. But other communities which have smaller percentages, their select boards consistently shift and increase the burden onto the businesses of the community, which are slim, slim, shift and increase the burden onto the businesses of the community, which are a slim sliver of the tax, taxpayers in the community, such as Reading. And that now gets borne by small businesses or businesses that, it's, it's just, they're gonna go onto another community. They're gonna go to a different community, because they can't afford the continuing increase, increased burden upon them when there's not a lot of businesses in there in the first place.
And if you're trying to draw businesses to the community, looking at the sewer and wastewater and stuff like that, you really kind of have to take that all as a whole and, and process for what makes sense for today. Tomorrow could be a whole different scenario.
Hopefully. All right.
Mike, could I ask you to go back one slide, please? Thank you. So this shifting of the rate is the example if you went 10%, if you went 25, or if you went to the full, or the max, as we call it, to the 1.5. And you can see the differences in the tax rate, in where it lands. And it is just the 10%, 25%, and 50%. It does not generate new revenue. It only shifts it.
Okay. Any questions on that or comments on that from the, my colleagues? Okay, all set?
Do you have any other slides on that? I know you recommended a single tax rate for us. Are you making any recommendations with respect to residential exemption?
None. And does anyone have questions about the shifting scenarios that Ms. Carbone has out, out there? Was that your last slide?
Um, we just have the conclusion.
All right, let's hear that. Oh.
I can just, it's only three bullets. We have it here anyway.
Well, Mike, Mr. Gilberto's trying to do that for those joining us.
Oh, that's right.
But that's okay, why don't you just read it to us?
Sure. So the conclusion is we must have a tax rate.
One read, I'm sorry, excuse me. Do you want to take a brief recess, Mr.?
Uh, for, more for the record, the public participating via Zoom, can you see this? I don't know whether nor cameras viewers can see it, though.
They cannot.
They cannot see it. So if you could read this slide, to your Madam Chair.
Yes, please, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. So in conclusion, we must set a tax rate and mail tax bills before December 31st. The options before the select board, retain a single rate, tax rate in FY '22, split the rate in FY '22. Do you want to adopt a residential exemption? And do you want to adopt a commercial exemption? A small commercial exemption part.
Thank you. Okay, let me just, before we go to, there it is, okay. Before we go to any attendees' comments, do my colleagues have any other questions? Questions? All right. And we'll go to open the, at this point, open the hearing to anybody, we don't have anyone in person, but anyone attending virtually or by phone. If there are any questions, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record and provide your comment. And do you have any, you could just raise your hand or in the chat room, seeing none? We'll close that portion, and Mr. Gilberto.
Sorry, Madam Chair, for the record, we did set a deadline of today for any written comment via mail or via email, and we did not receive any written comment.
Yes, in the paper, it said November 18th, though. Was that today or the 18th?
That was the 3rd.
All right. Let's discuss this to my colleagues. Anybody have any, now, we're gonna close that, close that portion of the hearing? Hearing, no comment, and to my colleagues, we'll turn it over to discuss. Any comments, any questions, any thoughts?
What's good?
What?
I agree with the recommendation for the single.
All right, we have to do it one at a time. Mr. Studo.
I agree with the recommendation for the single rate and to not pursue any kind of residential exemption at this time.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
The same.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary.
I, I just think the public's information, an, an average family home, which is now assessed at 659, 180, if you do the full classification, you're talking just residential now? You're talking the whole, follow, the whole presentation here?
You, we're talking all of it.
Okay, the whole thing.
Yes, so, and then these two, our two colleagues have given their thought on it, so.
Right, but I, I just think it's important for the public to understand, you know, really what, what the shift means for the average residential property assessed value and the average commercial, right? So the average residential is assessed at 659, 180. Average commercial is 1,219,166. So if we're gonna shift the burden, we can shift up to 150%. It means a savings of $988 for the average residential and an increase of $1,829 to the commercial, industrial. Keep in mind, it's, you know, less than 10% of the, 11% of property value is. So, you know, we can save the tax, average taxpayer by shifting the total 150%, you know, $82 a month, but cost the small number of commercial properties over $152 a month. And that's just on the average, average property valuations of those two entities. So to me, we're not there yet. I think the recommendation by the Board of Assessors is wise and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner, anything else, Mr. O'Leary?
No, thank you.
Mr. Wallner, your thoughts?
Yep, and, yeah, no, I think we're staying the course until we have some other infrastructure changes that justify it, and we're staying the course for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner. Now, I would, from the chair, I would agree. I think it's, it's incredibly harmful to shift the burden like that onto the limited number of businesses that we have, particularly because people are catching their breath and getting on their feet, back on their feet from all of the issues with COVID. And I know that we factored that in last year, but we also, we also, we do want to continue our mission to attract businesses. That's a whole EDC goal, and I don't think we would be achieving that goal if we, if we suddenly now implemented the, you know, shifting of the burden. And I also, you know, and again, I'm using Reading as an example. They might have, you know, Walkers Brook Drive and a, a, a bunch of larger named businesses and growing, growing their business industry, but it's the smaller businesses that suffer when the burden continues to be placed higher and higher and higher upon the smaller businesses. So you're essentially eliminating those, and we, and the smaller businesses are, I think, a large part of North Reading's identity. And we want to do whatever we can to kind of keep them in place. And we've seen a lot of changes as a board over the past year. Businesses that are shifting owners that have been around for a long, long time that, you know, businesses that had to close, even with the help that they were given. Businesses that had to close or downsized tremendously due to, due to COVID. So I'm in full agreement with my colleagues, and thank you so much for that presentation. All right, so do we have, do, where, if there's nothing else, if we can have most? Mr. Gilberto, anything else you want to add to that?
Nope.
Mr. Studo, do we have?
Madam Chair.
We'll have multiple motions, I think.
I move to establish tax, tax classification factor of one as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair, and Manu Pelias, aye.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend to the Board of Assessors that the FY 2022 tax rate be set at $15 per 1,000 valuation. I'll skip one, I'll go back.
You skip two.
That's all right.
You can go back. You can, we're, we can move around, that's, that works.
Yeah, I saw the choice, okay. I, I messed up the line.
Motion by Mr. Studo to set the tax classification as recommended. Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelias, aye.
Madam Chair, I move not to establish a commercial exemption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelias, aye.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend the FY 2022 property tax levy at $57,210,840, which is $11,710.60 less than the levy limit.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelias, aye. All set?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, we didn't do the commercial exemption section.
We did, didn't we? Not to establish.
No, we did the residential.
Oh, I thought we voted.
No, I said I.
Commercial.
The, the same, I have two of the same, then.
No.
Yeah, I definitely said not to establish a commercial exemption.
You said commercial.
It is there twice.
So we wanted.
It's there twice, okay. So the other one's residential, or just amended?
You did a residential and then you voted a commercial right after, from what I see.
Right.
Do you not show that?
Did I miss the commercial?
It was right after the residential.
Right after the residential.
I have it on the, on the motions, I, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, no, no, that was me, I didn't do the residential. I have the commercial here twice, that's what confused me.
Sure, do you want to revoke the residential, Mr. Gilberto?
I never voted the residential. I just have the commercial listed twice, that's what confused me.
Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Studo?
I would love to make a motion.
So you were right.
Madam Chair, I move not to establish a residential exemption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Hearing any, seeing, any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez, aye.
This goes the same thing.
Manu Pelias, aye.
Yes.
Okay, now we did them all.
Voted all of them, so, all right, I need to.
I just know, uh, we get asked, we want, we want the rate certified.
Don't worry. What I'm really doing.
I'm checking.
That's why you're so good at what you do.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to screw up at this clerk job, so don't ask me to do it again next year.
Oh, see, there's a plan.
This guy gets it all wrong.
Imagine how good you would get. We want you to get it right. We want you to keep doing it till you get it right. All right. So we are, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, I do want to just recognize that the assessor has prepared a very brief couple of slides for the public, just to know what exemptions are available to them.
That's great.
And I know that's not customarily part of a classification hearing, but I thought that maybe we could just briefly go over that. There's no action that's required at this point in time on the question.
Yes, that'd be great. Can you call those up?
I'll call those up, yes.
That is typically something we do talk about during this hearing, so we make use of your time on that. All right.
To the assessor.
Okay, we will begin, I'm gonna start with the veterans exemptions. Actually, I'm gonna back up and, and let you, let the public know that these exemptions do exist. So through the assessing office, we have the applications. We also have a little cheat sheet, because a lot of the exemptions have different qualifications. Those qualifications are, are created by legislation, not by our office. We go on the internet every single year and look at what's called an IGR, which is an informational guideline release, because if there's any change from the DLS, Department of Law, then it would be on the IGR. So we make sure that we have the most updated information. I also want to let the select board and the public know, as of today, when I went on to mass.gov, we have, in the town of North Reading, accepted Chapter 659, Section 5, which allows our office to increase our exemptions to whatever the COLA is that year. So we increase our exempted amount that we're abating off of the tax bills by the COLA, which is set by the state, not set by us or the federal.
That was a recent thing that we adopt, when we adopted that, that, that we were, we were wondering, we were talking about this, wondering, well, not we as a group, but we were questioning the TA on that earlier. That was a recent change that, to the legislation, right? Three years ago?
No, no, we've, we've been increasing by the COLA. I know for the 11, 12 years that I've been, um, and most communities do. I'll be honest with you, I can't remember the year that it was available for municipalities to adopt. I, I honestly can't remember, but I want to say it was a good 18, probably 18, 20 years ago. So, and what that does, it tries to keep up with the inflation in whatever minimal way. The exemptions, this first slide, for Clause 22. Clause 22 is for a veteran. The veteran under Clause 22 would receive a letter from the Veterans Administration in Boston stating that they have 10% disability. At that point, they fill out the application, they bring it in, and the Board of Assessors signs it, and $400 is removed from their third and fourth quarter bills. Your third and fourth quarter bills, third is the payment in February, and your fourth is the May bill. Those are the only two quarters that the assessing office can by statute abate any monies off of. So for 22A, which is the next exemption, that's $750. And again, you would receive a letter from the, from the Veterans Administration for all of these statutes that I have listed here. Those, the VA faithfully sends those out. They're usually by the end of June. And I can tell you, all of our veterans that do come in every year, they have their letter. They know that they need them. There are, so there are few that the disabilities are, are more than just a percentage. We do have a Clause 22D. The Clause 22D is for surviving spouses that have never remarried. And that's 100%, 100% of their tax bill is physically available. 22F, I can tell you, we, we have one. And that is certified by the Veterans Administration, and the veteran must be a paralegal, and that's 100% exempted also or abated. If anyone, any of the taxpayers out there have any questions on these exemptions, by all means, call our office. We can mail you an application, we can mail you a copy of our cheat sheet. We're willing to. We're willing to discuss whatever questions you may have. So then we'll move on to.
Mr. O'Leary.
On the veterans, Madam Chair. It, it's my understanding that the town may have an opportunity to increase these exemptions for veterans, but there's some machinations we have to go through in order to do that. What do we have to do? And what is the limit that's available to us to increase, to increase these exemptions? You know, well, we may have made some adjustments for cost of living, these things haven't changed in decades. So what do we, what can we do?
Can I answer?
Of course.
Asking you, sure.
If you can, yes, yes, Mrs. Gilberto.
So traditionally, we do, we do increase by the COLA every year. So the percentages.
So, excuse me, just, just in relation to that, so the four hundred dollars, what was it last year?
Off the top of my head. So the Twenty-Two, no, the Twenty-Two is always four hundred.
Okay, so that's, that's not COLA.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I misspoke on that one. The COLA goes over to the other exemptions, not on the veterans. Not on the veterans. I'm sorry, I misspoke.
That was my understanding, the four hundred dollars has been the same for?
The veterans are whatever the legislation has. When there's a change available for municipalities to adopt, it's local adoption. So we would have to go to town meeting. I will look into it and see what's available. I did jump on mass.gov today real quick. I did not see a change. Mike did send me the, the article, but I did not get a chance to look at it before coming to the meeting tonight. I apologize.
It's my, to my colleagues, it's my understanding that, you know, some municipalities have been able to take advantage of change in legislation, which has nearly doubled the veterans exemption.
Oh, wow.
Again, to me, this hasn't been addressed in decades, other than the legislation has allowed municipalities to take advantage of it. I think if there's an opportunity for us to do it, I think we should strongly consider it.
Absolutely.
And if it takes town meeting action, we should be prepared to do it at the next town meeting.
Absolutely.
The same thing with all the rest of the clauses here, Twenty-Two A, Twenty-Two B, C, D, whatever, whatever it is. But I think if, if you could put together some sort of presentation to us as to what's available to us, and what we could, should be, or could be proposing for consideration for town meeting, if that's what it's going to take. You know, I know if there's a, we, we have an open town meeting, formal government here, so it's different than a, a city council or Board of Alderman or something who may be able to address these things just amongst themselves. So we may have one extra hurdle to go through, but that's okay. You know, and I think it should be initiated to the board and should be considered by the public as soon as possible.
If, if there's, whatever I find, we, our office would have it ready for the annuals meeting without a doubt. We could definitely have it. If it requires local adoption, we would have to wait till the annual town, so I would definitely have that ready by then. If it's not local adoption, then we'll get it ready, and it will be before the board prior to, as soon as the tax bills get.
Terrific. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So can we just quickly do a review, because it's, the hour is getting late? So can we quickly review also the other exemptions that you have listed here?
Sure. So the other exemptions pertain to, well, we have a Seventeen E, which is surviving spouse with a minor child. There again, that's a percentage, it's, it's an income asset. The asset never includes the primary domicile or their house. The amounts are again, set by the state. The Clause Thirty-Seven A, that is illegally blind. We do have a couple, I'm thinking we have two applicants currently. And they would receive a certificate from the Massachusetts Commission on the Blind Eye of Austin, and that exemption amount is five hundred. The Forty-One D is for, for taxpayers that are over sixty-five. That is an income asset. As you see these income and assets, the income is, is considerably low, in my opinion. And that is, that is a place that I, I know we can change that by local adoption. And it, you're right, it probably is. Again, the assets do not include the primary domicile.
Mr. Studo, question?
Yeah, for, well, two questions. One, what is the percentage of the exemption? Doesn't show here. If you qualify for this, what is it? Like, what are you getting? Like, the other ones show exactly what you're getting, the dollar figure percentage.
Seven, seven fifty, if I'm not mistaken. If I'm wrong, I'll, I'll let you know. Seven fifty plus COLA.
And then another question. When it comes to calculating the income, because the state and federal government use very different equations, do they take into account federal-state pensions and social security as income in the equation? They do, so it's not, so it's all income, they don't exempt that. Because you know how certain calculations for benefits, like if you have a federal pension, you can make a hundred thousand and they won't count it?
Correct.
So this considers everything.
This considers it in our set. So in the last clause that's available, it was the Forty-One A, and that's a tax deferral. They, the applicant must be sixty-five, and they can defer up to a hundred percent of their taxes. What happens is the treasurer would put a lien on the property and act time of sale dissolving ownership for, but finding a way to say it, that lien would be paid off at that time.
So that would be at the time of death or whatever.
Well, that's what, yeah.
But it would be a, like, meaning whoever the beneficiary or the estate would be.
That's correct.
Like, they couldn't, they wouldn't have the right to defer on?
Well, they wouldn't have to make due and payment on.
Yes, but they wouldn't continue the deferral of the previous one.
It's on the current taxpayer that has taken out the deferral and signed for that lien.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just in relation to Clause Forty-One D, again, if we have some local option to change those income levels, if you look at, you know, for a single person living in a home.
Yeah.
You know, income can't exceed twenty-two thousand dollars. The average family home right now.
Right.
Tax bill is going to be ninety-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. So obviously, these haven't been adjusted for inflation or. At all. So, so if we have that opportunity, we should avail ourselves of that.
Since about nineteen fifty-four, it looks like.
Yeah.
And as far as the Forty-One A tax deferral, one of the other important considerations for people is, you know, the interest rate that municipalities must charge on the deferral. And I believe it's around four or five percent, which is significant. You know, so that when people enter into these agreements with the community, you know, if you're going to do it for ten years and you're deferring a hundred percent of your taxes, you know, that's nine thousand bucks, and that's ninety thousand dollars plus interest over a ten-year period. So it's significant. So if there's something that can be done in relation to interest rates that we charge, I think that's important to check in. So I, I think it's important for the board to understand what our options really are in relation to local acceptance of certain statutes and how we can adjust those. The, the other thing that we don't have here in North Reading that other communities such as our neighboring one in, in Reading has done is that they have a, well, the state has a circuit breaker bill, you know, for senior citizens with certain income levels, and when the ratio of the income level to the, exceeds ten percent of the, their real estate taxes exceed ten percent of the income level, they get up to eleven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This past season, taxes are off of their tax, they get an actual credit of eleven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to help offset the cost of their real estate taxes. Reading has incorporated in their exemptions the opportunity to match it. If you've lived in your residence for ten years, you meet the certain income limits, and you qualify to the, the state, they, you can get up to the same amount. So I think we need to take a look at that too, because, you know, we have a significant number of people within our population here who are trying to age in place, you know, and, and they maybe have been retired for a number of years, fifteen years, ten or fifteen years, and all of a sudden, I mean, if you look back at, so what's your tax bill, and most of us have been here for a long period of time, if you look back ten years as to what your tax bill was ten years ago as opposed to what it is today, yes, your assess valuation has gone up, but, you know, maybe your income hasn't. So we have a lot of people who want to age in place. If we can, again, avail ourselves of an opportunity as to what our neighboring community has done and tie it to the circuit breaker, I think that's something also that this board should consider. Again, whatever machinations we have to go through, whether it be town meeting or whether we can do it unilaterally here, those opportunities should be presented to us to consider, and I think we should be. So if you could take a look at that too, that'd be terrific.
Good.
Of course.
So the way the abatement exemptions work, some of them are reimbursed by the state. In other words, we send in what's called an MD One in the month of April at the end of accepting and failing all of the applications, qualified, qualified applications. For the means test and the additional eleven hundred that Reading does, they do receive their reimbursement on the initial abated amount, but the matched, we, they're not reimbursed for that additional amount. So say they abated, hypothetically, they have this property, they abated seven hundred, seven hundred dollars. They, the town of Reading matched that seven hundred dollars. So the total abatement was fourteen hundred. That seven hundred that was matched by Reading, that the town has to raise that amount of money. So the only reason I'm saying that is we, with budgetary constraints, we need to be cognizant of the fact of if, whatever additional monies that we're going to expect on abatements and/or exemptions, we need to raise that in the overlap. So just, I just didn't want to, you know, leave and, and not have everyone understand that that, that is where they do come out.
Madam Chair, I fully understand that, you know, we still need the same number, raise the same number of dollars in order to operate. You know, but by the same token, for the people that we're looking to target here, these are the people we want to have stay in our community. These are the people that don't have children in the school system. You know, so as soon as that three-bedroom ranch is sold from someone who's been living here for forty-three years, you know, and you now fill up with, with someone with two or three kids, that becomes a loser. I want these people to stay. I want them to age in place, I want them to be comfortable in their home. And if it costs them seven hundred and fifty or fifteen hundred dollars a year, it's a win. It's a huge win. And I think, I think the board just needs to be presented with those opportunities.
Absolutely. And I will get that data.
Mr. Studo.
I'm just saying, the data, like, I mean, I should probably get exactly of, like you said, like, how many households are you talking about? Qualified?
I, I wouldn't know that number. We're talking age.
Can we get the income number? Because that, that's an easier way to, like, I'm just saying, we can, I think it's a, a good cause to try to do it, but knowing the number of households that we would need to find money on the other side would be important. Like, do we have that data of how many households are qualified? If we raise it, let's say, to fifty thousand? Because I think that would have to be part of the presentation. Like, I, I'd, it'd be hard to make a decision to say, okay, if we raise it to fifty, we don't know how many people would qualify, right? And do we have access to, we have access to income data, right?
I personally don't.
But does the town?
I could ponder the thought on how I can obtain it.
I can, I'll give you maybe a quick shortcut. The best department of revenue knows how many people in town of North Reading qualify for the circuit breaker.
Okay.
This is maximum. If they, if you want to tie it to the circuit breaker.
You're pitching, you're talking about an increase to those income limits, though.
Well, I can tell you right now, the circuit breaker income limit far exceeds what we have here of twenty-two thousand dollars. Far exceeds. It's like sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, well, I think we need more data.
No, but the Department of Revenue, you can tell you how many people filed for it, because that's your turn.
Our colleagues in Reading have gone for overrides to be able to, you know, pay for the operating.
Qualified for the circuit breaker, so that, that number would be qualified.
But if it's a big, it's a, it's a, we, we would, we really would need the data to be able to.
Right. No, I'm just asking that we get it.
To make a, yes, yeah.
Inform decision.
Inform decision on what we would present to town meeting on that. All right. Mr. Walner, do you have any questions, comments, or thoughts? Mr. Walner's also our age-friendly guru.
Yeah, so I will comment just that we did talk about this Clause Forty-One D last year. Comments that Steve O'Leary sent today are the same we talked about last year. There's practically nobody that qualifies for it, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a benefit with no applicants, because nobody really qualifies within town with those circumstances. So I am the liaison for the Tax Aid Committee. We've had a few meetings, we've recognized there's many shortcomings, and it would take a commitment of the town, but we don't have good data, and that, that is what we need to get to come back to the town with what's realistic. And then I didn't know about the Reading circuit breaker thing. So we also, it's obvious now that I'm listening to this, that we need to work on best practices to what other, other towns have already done that we haven't done yet to try to get closer to the mark. So this needs a lot of work. I, this is, I've, I've been, I know this category needs a lot of work. I have been focused on the age-friendly other side of it, but this is definitely one of the objectives we have to focus on. Debbie knows this as well as me, so something we have to work on. We haven't, again, a few meetings in, we've just realized our shortcomings, we don't have any great answers at this point, so we'll work on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walner. Okay. Well, I think, is that concludes the presentation? That's great. Thank you so much for your information.
Thank you. And it was great to see everybody. I can't say enough. Glad to.
In person.
Got to move.
Oh, almost, right?
Well, yeah, we're good.
All right. So let's do, let's go backwards now to the public comment, which we skipped over. Is there any, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in public comment? There's no one personally present, so anyone who is joining us virtually, someone has a hand raised. Mr. Greenberg?
No, that's the cursor right there.
Oh, okay. All right. So I see, I see none, so let's move on to, we're going to table the vote to ratify the North Reading Staff Memorandum of Agreement. And we're going to move on to legal, legal bills.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for September twenty-twenty-one in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred, seventy-five, sixty-two as follows. General, sixty-eight, ninety-five, twelve. Labor, thirteen, thirty-two, fifty. Twenty-L, nine, eleven, forty-eight. Total, ninety-three, seventy-five, sixty-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Walner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Menupalli is aye. Next order of business is the minutes. June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, regular and executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one regular session minutes as written.
Second, Madam Chair, Michael?
Did Madam Chair through you, Madam Chair, and I know it's upcoming, but there were a couple of minutes where we had missed a couple of corrections that were more scrivener, I think, in nature than anything else. We made those corrections and we uploaded those minutes into the folder during the course of the day today. They were in a separate PDF. They were, they are marked up accordingly, but they were, I think they were all scripted errors.
So motion as amended? Or do we want to table? Or do we want to table?
I don't think, I don't think that was for these minutes, I think it was for the next ones. I'm dropping ahead.
Oh, okay. Are you sure it wasn't for these?
We've tabled these seven times, and it's June.
Okay, so we, we, we're, we're moving to, moving to approve the minutes as amended. Mr. Studo, did you make the motion to move to approve as amended?
No, I thought those were the next ones he said.
No, they're these ones as well.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the June 21st, 2021 Regular Session Minutes as amended. Second.
Motion, motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye.
Are the next ones as well amended, as amended?
Yes, Executive Session, yes.
Madam Chair, through you. So all of these minutes are, they're, they're all revised. So we did that between the last time these were on the agenda and tonight. Then today, there were further corrections that were made, which is what I was speaking to.
Do you want me to say as revised and then amended?
As amended.
For the, for the, I think as amended, we'll do it, but I just want to be clear, that two things happened. We made corrections between the last meeting and today, and then there were a few other things we had to do additionally. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve the June 21st, 2021 Executive Session Minutes as amended. Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Manu Pelley is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the October 18th, 2021 Regular Session Minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the October 18th, 2021 Executive Session Minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the November 1st, 2021 Regular Session Minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the November 1st, 2021 Executive Session Minutes as written.
Second.
As amended, right.
As written?
As amended, as amended, sorry.
You did say as written.
I, my apologies, as amended.
Second then.
I heard amended.
Obviously you need more practice to get another year clerked.
Another year, you just, you just bought it.
No. Mr. Wallner's going to say, they're going to serve a term of eight.
Mr. Wallner's giving the thumbs up there. Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Manu Pelley is aye. All right, we're all set with the minutes, and now we're going to move on to review the upcoming board's meeting schedule. So, Mr. Gilberto, we're in, we already have meetings set, and December 6.
Yes, would you like me to review?
Yes.
Review, Madam Chair, yes, we have meetings set for December 6th and December 20th. Those are our regular meetings in the month of December. We scheduled to continue our strategic planning meeting on Wednesday, January 5th. Recommended meeting dates for January up until the May election, the organizational meeting thereafter, with dates as follows. Mondays in January, the 10th and the 24th, the 17th being the.
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King holiday. For February, we recommended February 7th and 28th, with the 14th being Valentine's Day and the 21st being President's Day.
That's not school vacation week, no.
No, it's the 21st, Mr. Studo.
I have a long-term school vacation.
Well, Mike's right there with you, so.
We live in the same schedule. We then recommended for March, the 14th and 28th. Again, as, as has been the case for the past few years, typically we'll recommend the 2nd and 4th rather than the 1st and 3rd, Mondays for March and April. Part of that being because of the crunch of the meeting dates in February and because of the holiday in April as well. So we recommended the 14th and the 28th. What is not on here is a date for the Saturday Budget Hearing, which we anticipate will be either late February or early March, and we'll come back with that date in, in either December or early January.
Except February 26th.
Um, yes.
School vacation.
Correct. We do not typically have it.
You're being very selfish there.
No, we do, we don't typically have it that way.
I would hardly call your volunteer service on the Select Board and all of the meetings that you attend selfish. Mr. Gilberto, for April. For April, that's a dialogue for another time.
Through you, Madam Chair, equal 11th and 25th, with the 18th being Patriots Day and the school vacation week.
I know we take them on in negotiations, but the 25th is Memorial Day.
Oh, I'd like to celebrate that.
You're going to be expecting a cake.
That seems fun.
Page 11, page, this time's again.
Page four. In the, they're in the notes, the agenda notes, page four.
And then the May elec, when is the May election?
Election would be Tuesday, May 3rd, and so we put out there, if the board were to meet, as it customarily does, which is the Wednesday thereafter, it would be May 4th.
Make it the 5th, we can go for drinks after. Let's go to the aisle.
It's always the 5th.
All right. Okay, anyone have, oh, Mr. Wallner.
I have one. I'm going to be on the country on January 24th.
Country?
You want to anywhere good?
Can't do that.
Stop, stop, stop.
You can always zoom in.
I don't do that from Barbados, so I'm not sure.
Nice.
Nice.
I will be in no hurry. Just to re-wonder my whereabouts.
Not something.
All right, with, other than that scheduling conflict, are we all set with this schedule?
Are you going to be on Zoom from Barbados?
Please don't.
Hopefully not.
I don't like that.
Why?
I hope not. I certainly hope not. All right, okay, any questions? All, all set? And then our, okay, we're all set with that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Leary, all set? All right, our next order of business is the town administrate, oh, miss, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Gilberto, could you please just send us an email with all, with all of those dates? That would just help to add it to the calendar.
I can, full transparency, I think you asked me to do that in the last batch, I don't think I did it, so.
Probably why it just didn't end up on my calendar, so. All right, so the next order of business is, is, Mr. Studo, you have a question?
Were we going to try to start a little earlier than the 6th?
So on there, evidently there's a significant football game happening on December 6th. So I, the question, the question was raised by Mr. Studo.
Was that for me?
Just asked if we could start a little bit earlier on the 6th, in the hopes that we'd be able to get out of the meeting more quickly than we typically do here. I don't know what the game is, or what the time is, or the schedule is. I'm sure I'm going to watch it after the meeting, but I, we typically start at 6:30, and we, could we maybe start the regular meeting a little bit earlier than that? Is there anything preventing us from doing that, Mr. Gilberto?
I will check quickly on the schedule here, but I am not aware of anything, either personally or going on here at Town Hall that would prevent that.
And so would we want to start that meeting at 6:00? Or, Mr. Gilberto, 5:00?
4:00. I feel, I'm like, I'll buy lunch for everybody. I know.
I can adapt to my schedule.
No, I, same here, Madam Chair, I can be flexible, it's early or late is a wooden line.
I'll make you a deal, okay? Because I actually, I happen to work until 5:00, so my work schedule's until 5:00. So I, let's say if we started at 5:00, I have to, would that be?
I, I don't, again, it was a request, but like, I don't want to, everyone has to agree. I can do.
We don't have a, anything in our, our bylaws that says this meeting has to, can't start after, okay.
We have policy, but that can always be waived, and again, just adequate notice to the public.
All right.
For a good cause.
I was just wondering about that, and, and members can attend virtually anyway, or, I mean, but, you know, people can attend, it'll still be virtual as well at that point, too. Okay. Mr. Wallner, was it? Uh, Mr. Wallner?
I'm good with starting early on the 6th.
Okay, so why don't we just say we'll start at 5:00 then? And anything that might need to be handled in an executive session is just going to have to lend over to the next regularly scheduled meeting, right?
Right.
All right?
Okay.
Okay, all right. And then next order of business, Town Administrators Report.
Madam Chair, through you, just a friendly notice for those who may not know, the North Reading Food Pantry has moved to 150 April Street next to Union Congregational Church. Their donation drop-off points are the Stop &amp; Shop and the Post Office on Park Street. They have informed the town that they can no longer pick up donations here at the Town Hall, so just to let folks know, if you're looking to drop off donations, it can go to the Food Pantry or to Stop &amp; Shop or the Post Office. I attached to the board an updated listing of projects that I provided at their request to Representative Jones and Senator Tarr in anticipation of possible funding opportunities in the coming weeks and months. I updated the listing, including some additional items that have been submitted, and they were italicized on the listing, again, I forwarded that updated list along to the Senate and the representative. Unfortunately, the current round of state community compact funding could not accommodate our wastewater financing or bring communities' project requests, so we were not awarded funding at this time, however, we will continue to monitor the availability of funding between now and whenever the next time between comes up. We did receive a favorable renewal of our retiree health insurance plans. I attached a copy of the summary for the renewal that we have signed off on, and it is within the FY '22 operating budget allocation. Second to last, I've been informed by the town clerk that she has been contacted by Northeast Metropolitan Vocational School District relative to their efforts to potentially request or schedule a district-wide election, which, I think, there's still some question as to their authority to do that, from the conversations we've had, you and I, Madam Chair, but I know they are looking at that, and apparently are going to make some sort of a determination on a course of action, I believe, at their first December meeting, and I'm not sure exactly what day, whether it's the 2nd or the 9th. So I don't know, Madam Chair, I know you also wear another hat, your community's been contacted, contacted yet as well, but it may be, if it hasn't been.
The only thing I know is that they invited member communities to a breakfast to discuss the special election, but I, I wasn't a part of that, our city clerk was invited.
Same here, Ms. Statz was in attendance, so participated, I think, virtually in the meeting. I was not asked to attend, but I know they're discussing it, I don't know, there's no action been taken, but they were, I think, looking for feedback from the clerks in scheduling what would potentially be a district-wide election, so. And that, for those who don't know, was because it only took one community to not approve their mass school building authority construction project. There were a couple of communities after our approval that opted not to approve the project, and that's triggered them to look at their other options.
What, Mr. Studo?
If a vote's taken, right, the vote is by, like, actual voters that vote, correct?
Correct.
What, is it then, is it like a popular vote, or is it go by district? Like, if North Reading says yes, is it yes because North Reading said yes? Might break down the vote within North Reading.
It's district-wide, I understand.
And how many do you need to get to yes?
I don't know whether it's majority or two-thirds, I'd have to check that.
Okay.
But it's not community by community, it's district-wide, the whole vote.
Okay.
And I know, I believe they are looking at either a Tuesday or a Saturday election. And the reason they would not potentially do the vote on a Tuesday is because of the potential impact on communities that have holy places within their schools and have not already built a calendar to accommodate that voting. We're not in that category, obviously, but there may be communities within the district that have. So I just wanted to let the board know, the town clerk emailed me today, he'll let me know the status, just passing that along. We'll continue to monitor, monitor that. And then finally, Recreation Director Lynn Clemens has informed me of her intention to retire effective March 31st, 2022. We've obviously seen some transition in the Parks and Recreation Office, and we wish Mrs. Clemens well. I know she's, I think, has a tremendous opportunity to see and spend time with family, and is hoping to pursue that, and certainly look forward to recognizing her here in front of the board as that date draws closer. But I offer that just because folks should anticipate to see a job hosting shortly for that position as well in the coming weeks. I believe that concludes my report. See you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wallner.
Yeah, just, just briefly, I think most people know that I did an age-friendly presentation at the end of October, and then the Select Board had a chance to get together for our first of two strategic meetings, and like in the past, this board is highly favorable in supporting what the Age Friendly Initiative is trying to do. I owe the board some homework on some of the definitions we talked about. I'm in process of doing that, I'm not done, so before I give that back to the board, I want to be better prepared, I don't need you to spend time fixing things that I could easily fix myself. So I'm in process of doing that, but I think the main messages, the main message to the town is that the, the Age Friendly Initiative is strongly supported by the board, and we're going to do whatever we can to make that happen for the town, for the people who are affected, ultimately the whole community, but especially rising seniors, senior. So work goes on me a little bit to get a lot of that done, and I apologize for not having it done by this meeting tonight, but it is a problem. Thank you, that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Wallner, and also thank you for joining us remotely. You're away, but you're still here dedicated to the, dedicated to the board and dedicated to the community, so thanks for taking the time out to join us virtually. Mr. O'Leary.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, a few things. One, water wastewater, again, the subcommittee continues to meet, just in relation to ongoing projects, in relation to the chlorination plant, which is being built in 303 Main Street that's progressing well, ahead of schedule, which is a good thing, and within budget, so that's a good, good indication, things are heading in the right direction. As far as the wastewater, our consultants have been conferring with Mass DOT and coming fully engrossed in the planning stages and trying to get ourselves to fit in with their schedule, see what, what we have to do to comply with their requests and hopefully remain on schedule with what our plans are, so, but we're all working very hard. And again, I want to acknowledge the administration, Joe Creasy, and Mark Clark, and John Kleffel, and our consultants, they're doing a very good job, they're putting an awful lot of effort into it, because again, our time plan is short, you know, we're looking for an October 2022 town meeting, let's bring forth a whole host of proposals to move this project forward, and that's very aggressive, but they're meeting the challenge, so that's very appreciated. Hillview, again, is still considering. Hillview, again, is still considering application for use of the pub. And we're going to be meeting again, I believe, tomorrow, subcommittee. The subcommittee is going to consider proposal for the pub area and potentially the function hall up above. But there's significant challenges with the facility itself in relation to getting some activity, particularly in the function hall. But we'll have an update shortly, I would expect, from the board and the community as to what the future holds for that facility. Again, Board of Health, met with them the other evening. They continue to monitor what's happening with COVID and the vaccination rates, the clinics that they're running. And the Town Administrator want to date you as to when the new clinics, I know they have one today, but some others planned for the future. The Town Administrator will give you those dates shortly. But again, the rates are up everywhere, across the Commonwealth, across the country. So again, just the, everybody needs to be cognizant of what's occurring, what we can do individually and collectively to keep this virus down. As far as the vaccination rates here locally, only pretty steady. But as far as the younger kids now, we're at 27% of kids, five to 11 years old. This is as of last, I think, last Friday. So 27% have already been vaccinated, and it's climbing. So the interest is extremely high. Participation rate is high. So for the first dose, they had 27%. 12 to 15, 75% have had at least one dose. Seventy, excuse me, yeah, 75% at least one dose. 71% are fully vaccinated. 16 to 19, 80% of kids have had at least one dose. And 76% are fully vaccinated. 20 to 29, 72% have had at least one dose. But 66% are fully vaccinated. 30 to 49, 81% one dose. 75% fully vaccinated. 50 to 64, 87% of the community have had at least one dose. And 80% fully vaccinated. 65 to 74, greater than 95% have had at least one dose. 92% fully vaccinated. And 75-plus, greater than 95%, to the least one dose, and 91% fully vaccinated. So fully vaccinated here in the community, we're resting at 68%. And we need to do a little bit better. So opportunities are being presented to the community through the Board of Health and some vendors that we're doing business with, as well as, you know, local CBS, Walgreens, Walmart. It's pretty easy to sign up. So again, 76% of the community has had at least one dose, 68% fully vaccinated. So let's be vigilant, of course, with the holiday, holidays coming up, Thanksgiving this week. Just be cautious, be careful, and be smart. But again, Board of Health working hard and monitoring activities. Just for informational purposes, we're at, just in the last two weeks, there's been 40 new cases. And those caseloads are now starting to increase. And we're averaging just a little bit of the three, three cases per day. We're now exceeding five just in the last week or so. So there's an uptick here. There have been kids, you know, less than 11 years old. There's been like 50 some odd cases. So just in the last week, there's been 53 new cases just in this past year. So things are ticking up, such as here, it's everywhere.
Are those broken down with vaccinated and unvaccinated?
Well, some of the kids were, get under 11.
I mean, with adult, that went with people who can?
Yes, there are also, as far as, since July 1st, there have been, from July 1st to November 22nd, there's been 401 cases out of North Reading. 250 unvaccinated. 151 vaccinated.
Since July?
Since July.
What about just the recent ones?
The recent ones, I don't have the exact numbers, but a public health nurse has indicated that, I think, it's running almost two to one unvaccinated as far as the, so the breakthroughs, well, there are breakthrough cases. The vast majority of the people are contracting COVID right now, unvaccinated, which kind of makes sense.
Well, it's different. The Andover's, the Andover's numbers are more vaccinated, so I was just curious.
I am not aware of Andover's. And I think everything that I've seen from the national news level and even statewide level, the unvaccinated rates, virus case loads, unvaccinated rate, breakthrough rates. But again, they're just more vulnerable, for whatever reason. Makes sense. But that being said, people need to be cautious in what we're in settings, you know, use the masks. If you're going to be going out in public and going to public places, just be cautious. That's all. But anyway, very vigilant. Town Administrator's been tuning in too, so.
Just, we lost our audio on here, so he can please dial us back in.
Oh, okay. Hold on one, okay. Does Mr. O'Leary have to say that all again?
He doesn't have to say it all again. I think, NorCam has it, but Zoom did not.
Good, okay. You need audio for rich.
I'm thinking you got more people on NorCam than Zoom right now.
Maybe two more people.
One and a half.
That includes Phil.
That's his family.
Wife and son. His wife, Henry.
All I did want to, if I could add to, but I was confused with, the Food Pantry actually is not accepting any more donations.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting.
Because they got a bunch in from the community, and they thanked the community. This was a Facebook message they, they put out there earlier today, I guess, to piggyback on what the town administrator.
That was probably in response to.
Enter your participant ID. You are in the meeting now. There are seven participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen until the host admits you to the meeting. You are muted. You are unmuted.
Okay, we're all set? All right. Mr. Studo?
So I just want to say, just relay the same message that Governor Baker did, that enjoy Thanksgiving. Something we could not do last year. You know, of course, be cognizant, but also understand that it's a, it's different. It may look the same, but I do believe it's a little different, and that's it. I'm going to end on a very high note of just saying happy Thanksgiving to North Reading. I know some are staying here, some are traveling, but, you know, be careful on the roads. Because I'm going to tell you, I think that's going to be a bigger risk than COVID on the highway this year. Just because of, yeah, there's a lot of travelers irrespective of gas prices, so that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Studo. Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah.
We'll go back to you, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I know, I know you muted me, but that's okay.
Nobody muted you.
I just had a couple, just a couple other comments.
By the way, the people, the people, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished. I'm sorry.
No, well, I get it.
Mr. O'Leary?
No, that's okay. So for those of you on Zoom, you were fortunate, you didn't get to hear what I said. So, but to finish off, again, so that's from the board, board member reports as far as what we've been involved in from a liaison standpoint. But from a community standpoint, and I'm not going to steal anybody else's thunder here too, but there have been several things going on over the last week or so, which has been terrific, which makes this community a wonderful place to live and participate in. First of all, our strategic plan, the first meeting we had, was terrific. I just want to say, my colleagues, Town Administrator, I think we, we've made some significant headway. I think we found a lot of common ground and clarity on some issues. And we have more work to do, but it's all in a positive light. And I think it was very successful, to the point of, we're going to have a second meeting to finish things up. But I think that's terrific. You know, I think it was a wonderful thing. So the community, that's a good thing.
Desserts were good, too.
Again, someone else can talk about this, too. We also recognize a couple of people today, you know, the CIT Good Neighbor and Penny Esposito. And someone can talk about that a little bit later on, but again, well deserved.
You can go ahead. You can go.
No, no, and the Food Pantry and what they do. And Penny is an example of people who just quietly step up and put in a significant amount of effort and work. You know, and today, the Chair and I and the Town Administrator had the opportunity to have the Boston Post cane committee make a presentation to Camilla DeChara. Again, Madam Chair, you can take it from there, but it's, it's a wonderful thing that's come to fruition again. Again, there's this tradition of the Boston Post cane. Started back in 1908, when the Boston Post gave every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a gold top cane to give out to the oldest citizen in the community. And to, you know, continue to do that. Well, several years ago, or several decades ago, the cane disappeared. And we haven't been able to resurrect this tradition until this morning. And again, much to the credit of a good friend, Gloria Maestro, who's been, who was hounding us for a significant amount of time to get this on the, on the road and get going again. It came to fruition. The only sad part is that she's adhered to enjoy it and see that it came to fruition. But it was through her diligent efforts that pushed this, this committee to get it done. Got a replacement cane. And it's going to be on display again in the library, with the plaque with all the future recipients who received it, put on the plaque. This lovely young lady that received it today, got a nice pin commemorating it with some citations from the committee, this board. And it was a delight to be there. And then, the Chair and Mr. Gonzalez can talk about this more extensively tonight, but the drive through Thanksgiving.
That's great.
Big pickup meal, that Representative Jones and Senator Tar sponsor on an annual basis was a tremendous success. And Linda Jones deserves, if not all, most of the credit. But it's a tremendous undertaking, and I know there were 150-plus meals that were delivered on Sunday. Very efficient operation, and the effort that goes into it is significant. And I know the people that came through were very appreciative, but to Brad and Bruce, and particularly Linda, you know, I know it's greatly appreciated when people received it, and I appreciate the opportunity to just participate. And then, last but not least, North Reading Football Team, who's qualified for the Super Bowl, will be playing on December 12th at Jolent. What's that?
The first.
The first?
Yeah.
First time?
Oh, no, I was going to say December 1st.
Oh, December 1st? I thought it was, oh, December 1st, okay. But at Jolent Stadium against Swamska. And in between, they have to beat the pioneers from Linfield to take, to take Turkalis and hold on to Turkalis, which is a little trophy that they swap back and forth in the Thanksgiving rivalry. So good luck to the Hornets, Thanksgiving Day, but good luck in the Super Bowl, too, and well deserved. They've worked hard this year, so. But to everybody else, it's my colleagues, Administrator, everybody here, happy Thanksgiving, safe travels if you travel. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Gonzalez? Okay.
So I'll talk about recycling. I got an email today from Dan Greenberg. I don't know if he's still on there. I think he's gone now. He was here. Received a, with the work of Joe Parisi, our Director of DPW, got a small initiative grant from the DEP in the amount of $1,250 to use towards waste reduction and recycling. So that was great news from the Baker Polito Administration. So that's exciting, and we'll have fun thinking about how we'll use that. And also, still working on that pay-as-you-throw initiative that's really moving forward pretty quickly. So we'll be talking more about that in the future. And I wanted to just talk about the Veterans Dinner. Sue Magna did a fantastic job. All of those who attended, it was a great evening. It's always an honor to be there and to be honoring those veterans. And the Tuck's Berry Country Club donates everything, the meals. It was, it was a really, it was a really great night. And she did, always does a great job with that. And of course, the Thanksgiving bags, I was going to touch on that, too. That was, that was a great day. Three of us were able to make it, and it's always fun to do that. I enjoy that every year. Of course, I enjoyed the sit-down dinner of war, which they always donate it also, Representative Jones and Bruce Tar and Linda. So thank you to them, because that's always a great take. And Linda put so much work into those bags. They were unbelievable, what was in there. And yeah, the Good Neighbor Awards, unfortunately, used to be in person and a bigger, you know, it just felt nicer to be there and be present. But now it's, I haven't been able to be there for the two that they've done. So, but I don't know, maybe, were you, were you there, Stephen? Yeah, so maybe you can touch on that?
Sure.
On how they did that, because I wasn't able to attend.
Yeah, it was well done by Ms., by Ms. Luckowitz. So we went to the Food Pantry this afternoon, excuse me, and presented Penny Esposito, who was one of the nominees with the Good Neighbor Award. Chief Stats, on behalf of the CIT, presented her with the plaque that goes with it, it's a small plaque. I offered a certificate of recognition on behalf of the board as well for, for Ms. Esposito. And it was different, certainly, not quite the feel of having the meal together at the senior center like we've done. But I think it was a nice recognition. And we were able to catch a photograph outside in front of the new sign with the Food Pantry as well, which everyone appreciated. I will note that Mrs. McNeil's son is our next honoree for tomorrow afternoon. So we'll be presenting him with a certificate and recognition as well. I believe we decided over at the Public Safety Building will be doing that in recognition of his, his work. About a year ago, assisting somebody who was in trouble in Upper Trooper Park due to an injury, if I have that correctly. So just want to point that out. And then we have a few others that we'll, we'll also be recognizing in the coming weeks. And we can, I think, update the rest of the board once those all take place the next meeting.
Is that it, Eddie?
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, it's a really nice thing that the CIT does, recognizing people in the community who have contributed. And, you know, just showing their appreciation to them. So happy that they could continue to do it, even though it's not in the way that it used to be done, like a lot of things. And that's it. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
All right. I'm going to be repetitive, because you pretty much all touched upon everything that I wanted to, I wanted to talk about. Eddie also was at our town meeting, though. He was doing his community service for us. And sometimes he's there with the microphone to another meeting, so he's a good community volunteer, you know. With Mrs. McNeil's son. I wanted to also acknowledge Sue Magna, that the dinner was excellent. I was able to attend with Mr. Studo, Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Gilberto. We had some interesting discussions with the representative and senator. And we also got to meet and hear the keynote speaker, who's the Secretary for the Massachusetts Department of Veteran Services. We sat with her as well, Cheryl Poppy. And her speech was amazing about all the things that she's carrying forward, you know, making happen for veterans. And it was really just a great, an excellent evening. And the second thing I wanted to mention was our celebration of Mrs. DeShara today. And for those who don't know where it got its name, the Boston Post cane, believe it or not, some of us didn't know the Boston Post was a newspaper. And so that was the genesis of the name. And also, just to acknowledge Gloria Maestro's daughter, Paula was there. And Paula's on the committee, the Boston Post cane committee. And she and Angela Mosseri were instrumental in pulling that together. And that was another great, that was another great. great, that was another great, you know, like Mr. O'Leary said, community celebration of this, you know, wonderful woman who has, her, her advice was, you know, family is everything, be, and be kind, and that's her kind of secret, and she's a very funny woman too. So you, you could definitely, her humor definitely came through. Representative Jones was also there to convey, you know, a citation on behalf of the, of the legislature. So that was a really nice, fun thing to do today and celebrate her and celebrate her membership in the community. And thanks to Mrs. Mosseri and to Paula for making that happen, pulling that together, and the committee for making that happen. The other thing I wanted to just acknowledge again was that senior, the baskets, you know, we're, we're here doing that as members of the board, but everybody, there's a whole host of volunteers that show up and make that day happen. And that was several hours yesterday afternoon because they were passing out baskets for Redding seniors as well as North Reading seniors. They started with Redding and then.
We got there a little early.
We got there, yeah. So they, we were enlisted for both. Mrs. Gonzalez and I were enlisted for both. Mr. O'Leary was there, and it's Senator Tar, I think, and Representative Jones just make it, make it a lot more entertaining, we'll say, you know. But there was a great group of volunteers that really, there's a lot, it's like an assembly line there. So thank you to them for doing that for our seniors. And, and you know, it's just something amazing that Representative and Mrs. Jones and the Senator put together for the community, and it's, it's just a wonderful thing to see how many seniors showed up to give donations to the Food Pantry. It's excellent. I wanted to also mention the discussion that we had on the strategic planning meeting because I agree with, with my colleague, said it was a, we made excellent progress. And in terms of Mr. Wallner's presentation with regard to the age-friendly initiatives, it did yield some outcomes that we had decided as a board, which would include appointing a public services director to oversee, there's a position in the charter, and that would be to oversee our public services departments. We think that would go a long way to, towards some of our strategic planning goals and vision, as well as definitely the commitment that we made to that, that age-friendly initiative a while back. And we also intend to, I believe we had discussed at that meeting, the funding mechanism for that would be, you're going to have to remind me, Mr. Gilberto, initially covering the funding for that. Did we say ARPA funds? Or were we talking about salary reserve?
Yeah, I believe it was salary reserve.
Salary reserve, and then we'll hopefully have a person in place to help out with, and that would just go a long way towards us meeting a lot of these goals that we're trying to get accomplished. And the second piece of that is, we did already fund in the budget with town meeting a grant writer. So we'd like to, you know, actually actively recruit a grant writer for the town, which would also go a long way towards those goals. And we, we have, Mr. Wallner pointed out to us during that meeting, that we have made specific commitments when we signed on to that. So these are steps to take that, that will, you know, sort of go a long way to, to completing those goals on a timely basis. Even though we had COVID disrupting things, we're on, we're back on the track to completing those goals. And like Mr. Wallner said, we're going to reconvene, and Mr. O'Leary said, we're going to reconvene that meeting because we have a lot more planning to do and some, you know, some strategic vision to, to move forward. But at least we're in a good spot with some, some concrete results yielded. And I also wanted to mention that the North Reading Maskers is going to be putting on a production of Newsies, and there are tickets still available. And if you haven't seen a North Reading, North Reading Maskers production, you should go and see it. It's like a Broadway show, and you'll want to go back. So go to the earlier shows because you're going to want to take your family back to the shows after that. So the tickets are on sale. You can go to ticketstage.com. They're, they're going to show the play December 3rd and December 4th, December 10th and December 11th. I had the occasion to attend a Wakefield production, and I learned that our drama instructor is best friends with the Wakefield instructor, so he invites her to do a showing. So we, I saw a sneak peek of one of the numbers from the show, and, and they participated in the end, and that was, that was excellent. The performance, the Wakefield performance is excellent too, so. But anyway, go buy your tickets to Newsies. You're going to want to bring your family. It's a great time, and it'll be a fun time. And that's my shameless plug because I happen to have a son that's in the show, so. And finally, I just want to end by wishing everyone a healthy, happy, holy Thanksgiving. I hope you have a peaceful, I hope my colleagues, and I hope members of the community have a nice, peaceful, enjoyable Thanksgiving. Do we have a motion?
There's always a motion.
Mr. Studo.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn. One second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And you probably is aye.